I'm going to call to order this Lacey City Council meeting on January 16th, 2024. For the record, we have Councilman Vasquez out tonight, but the rest of the council is present. If you're able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in all, indivisible, with liberty and democraticity.
Before we get started, we, the city of Lacey, are on the ancestral land of the tribal people of the Treaty of Medicine Creek, including the Nisqually Indian Tribe and the Squaxton Indian Tribe. And just to let the council know, tonight's the first day of electronic voting. So with that, can I get a motion to approve tonight's agenda and consent agenda?
Move to approve the agenda and consent agenda as printed.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor of that motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
There it is.
There it is. That motion carries. We have approved our agenda and consent agenda. And first up on our approved agenda is Lacey Loves to Read Bookmark winners, which is one of my favorites of the of the year. And we'll bring up Jordy, Jamie, and everyone from that to announce them.
Hello. I'd like to welcome you all here tonight. My name is Jordy Ratkey, and I'm with Lacey Parks Culture and Recreation. Joining me tonight as the head of our Lacey Loves to Read Committee is Jamie Roberts, and from North Thurston Public School District. And then we also have Raina from the Lacey Timberland Library. I'd also like to welcome our grand prize winners, who will be recognizing tonight with their families. So let's give them a round of applause. Now celebrating 21 years, Lacey Loves to Read continues to be a popular and successful community literacy partnership between the city of Lacey, Lacey Timberland Library, the Lacey South Sound Chamber, and North Thurston Public Schools. The mission of Lacey Loves to Read is to bring the community together around the works of one award-winning author. Each year, we look for someone who has written a variety of books, which will spark interest and encourage reading for all ages. And we couldn't do this program without the support of many community sponsors and businesses, including Friends of the Lacey Library, North Thurston Education Association, and more.
So this year's program features Newberry and Pura Bill Pre Award winner and New York Times bestseller bestselling author Donna Barbara Higera. Higera's middle grade and picture book books are all about kids who find themselves in odd or scary situations. Higera is biracial, and many of her characters share that identity. From language to cultural differences, biracial life can be complicated. Next slide. Lacey Loves to Read and the Lacey Timberland Library is also proud to sponsor our teen writing and cover art contest for middle and high school students. The goal of the teen writing and cover art contest is to give teenagers a special chance to participate in Lacey Loves to Read by sharing their writing and art skills. The committee is currently going through the judging process for this year's entries, and the winners will have their work preserved in an ebook and be recognized at a special reception with the author during her visit. Read Around Lacey! In a really awesome partnership with the Lacey South Sound Chamber and local businesses, kids in kindergarten through fifth grade can join this interactive reading adventure by visiting six of participating businesses. At each location, participants read a sample of something they have written, or a section of their favorite book, and the business representative will share why reading is important to the work of that business. Participants will be entered in a drawing for some really cool prizes. And Read Around Lacey is going on right now through Friday, January 26th. Kids can pick up a form at their school, or print one out from the school district's Lacey Loves to Read website, or pick them up at the libraries, of course.
Good evening. So we are excited to welcome Donna Barbara Higera. On February 14th through 16th, she'll be here. As she comes to Lacey to meet students at some assemblies, and greet Lacyites in person at our Popular Community Author Event, which will be held at North Thurston High School Cobal Center on February 15th at 6:00 PM. This community event includes an author presentation, book sales, and signings. Next one. Part of the Lacey Loves to Read tradition to get kids excited about the program and combine art with literacy is the bookmark contest. This year, we again had hundreds, actually almost 4,000, students enter the contest, and it was sponsored by Graphic Communications, KGY Radio, and Wright Systems, Browsers Books, and then the North Thurston Ed Foundation. We have 24 winners representing every school in the district, as well as private schools and homeschoolers. Tonight, we are here to introduce our grand prize bookmark winners, the top in each age group from North Thurston Public Schools and the community. Once again, the competition was tough, and the artwork was simply amazing. The contest, and in fact the entire program, is managed by the Lacey Loves to Read Steering Committee, made up of program partner representatives, along with dedicated teachers and librarians. Are there, do we have any committee members here in the audience that want to raise their hand? Yeah, it takes a, it takes a village to pull it off. I'd also like to recognize a couple of our school board members who are here tonight, who also support us. So Espy is here as one of our board members, and Dr. Clemens in the back. Thank you for supporting it. We will announce each of the winners, and share their artwork, and invite them to come up and get a certificate from the mayor, and then shake hands with all the council members. Once we have all the kids up here, we'd like to have them pose for some pictures with the council, so parents can take pictures also before we dismiss you. So each grand prize winner was already, has already received a book from Donna Barbara Higera, and copies of their bookmark that they could give out to family and friends. And their bookmark poster will be on display at the Lacey Library for the month of Lacey Loves to Read. So let's start with our first winners. Okay. Grand prize winner for K and 1 is Annalise Cresto. She is a first grader at Horizons Elementary. Come on up. Thank you, Annalise. Do you want her to go through, do you want her to maybe stand over here, and then they all can walk through and shake hands? Annalise, you want to stand over here by us? Changing things just a little bit. There we go. Okay, our second, third grade grand prize winner is Lucas Sarver. He's a second grader at Olympic View Elementary. Our fourth and fifth grade grand prize winner is Lauren Solorio Rios. She's a fifth grader at Mountain View Elementary. Okay, for sixth through eighth grade grand prize winner is Aspen Berman Solo. I hope I said that okay. She is an eighth grader at Salish Middle School. Come on up. Our ninth through 12th grade grand prize winner is Nina Williamson. She is a 12th grader at River Ridge. Our community grand prize winner is Naomi Montgomery. She is a seventh grader at Northwest Christian Academy. And we had a new category this year, the superintendent's choice, which goes to Rowan Aquino, ninth grader at River Ridge High School. Okay, this might be easier now for them to go through.
All right. I would like to thank the council for welcoming the grand prize winners tonight. We're going to have you guys go ahead and go shake the council members' hands, and then we'll stand up here and take a group photo, okay? Let's give a round of applause to our.
Good job.
Amazing.
Did you really draw?
Good job.
That was amazing.
The council and the superintendent coming around.
You can stand right in front of it, maybe, so people can see.
All right, one, two, three. Say, "We love to read!"
We love to read!
Great job, thank you. Thank you very much.
So next up on our agenda is our Lacey Youth Council reports. And if, if everyone wants to go from Lacey Loves to Read, go ahead, you can, you can go out the door right now. Let's give them a second. Thank you, everyone. Congratulations. I know, amazing. Go ahead, Sarah, I think you can get started.
My name is Sarah Towne, and I represent North Thurston High School. For our school reports, I have that the winter sports are going strong, with our girls' basketball team going undefeated, nine and oh currently. The boys' basketball team is 12 and two out of conference, and then undefeated in the conference. Spring sports are starting up in February, so winter sports have started for softball and baseball. The yearbook just met its second deadline, and we are on our way to our third. Seniors have finished up many of the remaining deadlines for college applications. And those who are looking for other career options, the school is hosting the ASVAB on Friday. FBLA had an ice cream social last week, giving opportunities for members to work on their competitions with our first conference in February. Other than that, we had a snow day on Friday, which gave the students an extra long weekend. And that's all I have for my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah.
Hello, council. I'm Eliana, and tonight I am presenting Pope John Paul II High School's report. So since the last time I have reported to you, my school's activities have very much shifted, because winter is very different than fall when it comes to our school. We are now deep into our basketball and cheer season, with winter training for track being an ever-present event. I don't know a time of year when they aren't practicing. Our robotics and knowledgeable teams have also competed, with knowledgeable taking first in our league. We also have five, we also had five students who took part in the American Mathematics Competition. As we enter more fully into 2024, we are also nearing the end of the semester. This week actually happens to be Dead Week, the period of review right before finals. Everyone is studying hard for the test coming up, and in all honesty, we can't wait for the beginning of the next semester. Looking back, in December, we finished our chili challenge to support All Kids Win, and it was incredibly rewarding. We are very glad that the drive was so successful, especially considering our school size. On the last day of school before Christmas break, the entire student body also participated in our annual Day of Service, where we all went out to different locations in the community and did service work for two hours, in locations including Salvation Army, Safe Place, Kokua, the Lacey Food Bank, and many others. It has always been a high point for me. Overall, a lot of great things happened at JP2, and we are all working very hard. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sophia Aller. I'm going to be presenting for Timberland High School. Today we had our Martin Luther King Assembly, which went great. Our ASB hosts all our assemblies, and it was a hit. Over winter break, unfortunately, one of our counselors, Ms. Labuda, passed away. She had a remarkable 36-year career at Timberline, and was a cherished friend and respected colleague. The week back from winter break, we all got to like talk about it, and it was, it went well, but she will be missed. Last Friday, we had a snow day, and last week, our fire alarm went off three times.
Thank you.
So the youth council made the decision to add on an additional report, a youth council update. Allow me to introduce myself. My name is Nathaniel Clay, and I am representing the youth council in the very first youth council update. Across our two meetings in the month of January, we started planning for the youth summit and for the, for the first youth summit and resource fair, and human resources will be there to review resumes. We also, this event will be taking place March 16th, 2024. We've made decisions on public speakers, concessions, and prizes. Another thing that the youth council has begun preparations for is the joint meeting with the Commission on Equity, taking place on April 22nd. And we have made the decision to cancel the work session on the 16th in light of that. That is all for my report. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, and keep up the good work at Lacey Youth Council. I'm really proud of all you. Thank you. So next up is two public service awards, and I've asked Ryan to come up and sort of give a little bit of background on, on Dave and Mark. And it's interesting, because both Dave and Mark came in at the same time. As a matter of fact, I remember that interview process, where we had a couple openings, and it was, actually, Rick was in on it, and I just remember thinking, boy, we're going to have two great plan commissioners ahead of us. Little did we know at the time how much of an impact Mark and Dave was going to have on the Plan Commission, and actually, the city of Lacey. And, because we all understand how, how important it is to have our Plan Commission, and they've both been very integral parts of the Plan Commission. So I'm going to turn it over to Ryan, he's going to talk a little. to talk a little bit and then we're going to bring you guys both up and I'm going to present you with some awards.
Yep. Thanks for that great introduction, Mr. Mayor. Just as a reminder to the council, the planning commission is an advisory board to the council that makes recommendations on things that are related to basically all things planning. So that could be things like land use, housing, high-level policy that the planning commission gets deep into the weeds on and acts as the council's eyes and ears as a window into the community as well. So a little bit about what Dave and Mark have worked on along the years. Dave Lawson first started your first planning commission meeting was back on February 6th of 2018. And Mark, your first meeting was back on March 20th of 2018. So both served approximately about six years on the planning commission. So they've been extremely reliable and solid members throughout. And we already miss your contributions. We've already had a planning commission meeting this year and your absence was noticed. So, you know, keep that in mind. You're leaving a big gap here at the city. So some of the things that they've worked on, the Depot District Subarea Plan, our City of Lacey Pedestrian and Bicycle Plan. They've worked on issues related to homelessness and housing, things like our Affordable Housing Plan and our Housing Action Plans. A major update to our Shoreline Master Program, an update to our Urban Forest Management Plan, various climate initiatives, including the adoption, the recommendation and eventual adoption of the Thurston Climate Mitigation Plan. And this is a special mention for Dave. This is all of our stormwater planning throughout the years. I think nobody's been excited, as excited to see that come through as Dave. And so that's things like our Stormwater Master Plan and codes associated with our stormwater. So those are just some of the highlights that the planning commission has seen over the last six years. There's probably been more than that, but those were some of the things that came to mind. So with that, Mr. Mayor, I'll turn it over to you to pass out the awards to Dave and to Mark.
Sure. Well, first I'll bring up Dave. And the story about Dave, I was in Washington, DC and we were just working on this midtown area. And we were, staff was coming up with a proposal of what we're going to call this area. And they were talking about calling it Innovation District. And I happened to be in DC at a conference and Dave happened to be in DC in conference. And he goes, we need to get that together and talk. And I'm like, okay, let's get, you know, we're going to get together and talk. And so we're there and he goes, there's something I need to talk to you about, you know, this naming of this district, you know, it's called the Innovation District. I really think it needs to be called Lacey Midtown. And I was like, you know what? That is spot on. And it was going to be on our agenda like as soon as we, as I was getting back from DC and staff was preparing it. And I sort of dropped the bomb. I remember, I think we were at a work session, wherever. And I go, you know, that's great, but I think we, I got this recommendation and I really think we need to look at and call it Lacey Midtown, maybe Innovation District. And that was all because of Dave. And so if you look at it that way, you know, Dave has had, will have a huge impact on the city of Lacey because this area, our central area of Lacey, an area that we have been struggling to try to create an identity that everyone, this is basically where Lacey got started, but create this identity, that's always going to be attached to Dave Lawson. And so on behalf of the city of Lacey, it's really, it's my honor not only to call you my friend, but to give you this distinguished public service award for your time on the planning commission and you serving as a chair of the planning commission through a time where we needed solid leadership. I've had several planning commissioners tell me how wonderful of a meeting that you have put on and how much you have meant to the city of Lacey. And so if you, on behalf of the city of Lacey, here's our distinguished public service award. Give it to Dave Lawson.
Thank you.
If you'd like to say a few words, I really want to sort of get what your thoughts of your time on the planning commission.
Okay. Well, first, thank you, Mayor Ryder and the council for allowing me the opportunity to give back to my city. It's a two-year process just to get the handle on what you're going to have to do. And it's an amazing opportunity to meet a tremendous staff that helps us through this process. I can't say enough about Ryan and Rick at the beginning. You know, it is a tough, a tough process to go through to learn how to be a good planning commissioner. And I had no idea what I was stepping into. I really didn't. And the good part was I love to learn. So the learning process was tremendous. And the commission group that I worked with were amazing. And, you know, if there's anything that I can say for the future of the planning commission is keep working to create a diverse group of individuals that reflect the city that we are because it makes a huge difference. It really does. You get a better view of what people's thoughts are in the community. So I wish the commission great things in the future. And again, thanks.
Please shake your hand. Well, obviously, we just heard a long list of all the issues that the planning commission went through during your tenure. And both you and Dave have such an imprint on this city now. The list of all the things that were going on during this time, it's really during a period of time where I think Lacey has matured and really have come into our own as a city, you know? I think for a long time, we were, we've somewhat had struggled with our identity. But now we are leaders in the county, leaders in, I believe, in the state. And we couldn't do that without our planning commission members who do a lot of the hard work. And so, Mark, on behalf of the city council, it's just really my honor to present you with this distinguished public service award for your time on the planning commission between 2018 and 2023. And I also want to get your thoughts on your time on the planning commission here.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. You know, friends and family will ask me what it's like to be on the planning commission. And I'll tell them, you learn a tremendous amount, but you also gain an appreciation for what goes on in a city. I mean, as an ordinary citizen, we often take for granted all the things it takes to maintain and grow a city. And so you get that insight and gain or become more grateful for what we have here. Also gained, had an appreciation on the planning commission is the way the meetings were conducted. We were, it was always based on mutual respect. And even though we had disagreements, we were never disagreeable. And that kind of a tone comes from the top. It came from Dave for his couple of years. I really appreciate what we learned from Rick and from Ryan and from all of the staff members that we had a chance to be briefed by and learned from during our time on the commission. You know, it's something I'm grateful for and I'm honored by being here tonight. Thank you so much.
You know, people hear me talk about the council and talk us up because there's a lot of business owners and veterans and et cetera and all walks of life and different experiences and all that. But the planning commission is that and more. I mean, I think we've had more doctorates than we've had business owners on the planning commission, you know, Dr. Saabdi and Dr. Bueller. And the list goes on and on when it comes to this planning commission. And you guys do so much. You take just as much grief and you get just as much accolades. And you do it voluntarily. You know, you don't, there's no money involved. It's just love for your city and giving back. And that goes so far, not just for me, but I believe our city and all the residents appreciate it so much. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. This is truly, you know, like I said, this period in our city's history is one where we've, Lacey has just has come into our own. Now we're the largest city in the county. And that has come from good planning, you know, and that starts at our planning commission level. So from the bottom of our hearts, thank you for all you've done for the city. We really appreciate. You've definitely left your mark.
So next up is public comment. We didn't have anyone sign up for a public comment or pre-register. Is anyone wishing to address this council? Okay, then we're going to go into our next agenda item, which is our official proclamation of Lacey Loves to Read.
City of Lacey Official Proclamation. Whereas literacy remains a top school and community priority and is integral to the success in school, business, and daily living. And?
Whereas providing opportunities for community members of all ages to discuss the cultural and literary merits of reading will help create a culture of 20 minutes a day, family practice, and civic pride in Lacey. And?
I think you're doing the next one, too.
Sorry, I didn't see I had two. Okay. And whereas a community-wide reading program such as Lacey Loves to Read Month will help support students and community members in understanding the power of writing and literacy in our lives, in their lives. And?
Whereas the partnership between North Thurston Public Schools, the City of Lacey, and the Lacey Timberland Regional Library has made this program possible. And?
Whereas reading informs, empowers, and teaches us the lessons of history. And reading literature that explores diversity, global, and social issues can help increase tolerance and unity within a community. And?
Whereas Lacey community members can read and discuss a variety of works by award-winning author Donna Barbara Higera, who will visit our community on February 14th through February 16th, 2024.
Now, therefore, I, Andy Ryder, mayor of the city of Lacey, on behalf of the Lacey City Council, do hereby proclaim February 2024 as Lacey Loves to Read Month in the city of Lacey and encourage community members of all ages to acknowledge and celebrate the importance of reading and to discuss the works by author Donna Barbara Higera. Signed by myself, Mayor Andy Ryder, on today's date, January 16th, 2024. And? The Lacey Loves to Read crew come up on behalf of the Lacey City Council. Here's proclamation. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your support.
Yep. Thank you so much. Okay, on to our next agenda item, and that's under ordinances, ordinance 1655, the Capital Facilities Plan Amendment. Ryan?
Good evening again. So in front of you tonight is a recommended adoption and an ordinance to consider adopting the city's government facilities master plan as well as the city's capital facilities plan. A little bit about the project before we go into more details here. So the project goals were for the facilities master plan to improve the understanding of facilities needed to support citywide operations, to recommend cost-effective facilities investments to meet future needs, build support for investments through a transparent and collaborative process, and create a user-friendly capital facilities plan that includes a civic facilities strategy. So as I mentioned, there's two parts of this. First is the government facilities master plan. A little bit about the process that the government facilities master plan went through. It was substantial. 10 interviews with staff and subject matter experts, several facility tours with our consultant teams looking at function and condition rankings of all of our different facilities, our city buildings specifically, 10 work sessions with directors, including two visioning workshops and two alternative workshops, four meetings with our city manager and finance department director, three council check-ins. So this is actually the fourth time that the city council is seeing this, a public information booth at Children's Day where some of this information was presented to get us to the draft government facilities plan. That's part of our capital facilities plan documents. As a little bit of a reminder, the in-scope facilities included Public Works, which is our operations headquarters on College Street, as well as our city yard property on Martin Way, Animal Services, which is located on Martin Way in Olympia, our administration building here at City Hall, and then Parks, Culture, and Recreation Facilities, including the senior center and the White House. For a total, we have 17, around 17 total facilities for over 200,000 square feet in Lacey. Some other ones are listed on the slide there. It's important to note that addressed and other plans are things like our new police headquarters, as well as our new museum and cultural center. So this, those facilities are not part of these recommendations. Also, the recommendations presented here tonight do not include things like parks, picnic shelters, water treatment plants, and other operational structures like that. This is really our big government facility buildings. So we'll start with Public Works Operations. The key findings in the government facilities master plan for this facility is that it's in fair condition and is approximately 65% undersized. So it's significantly undersized. We're unable to co-locate existing divisions or expand onsite or accommodate the service growth that's needed to meet a growing community. We also have our high-value vehicle fleet that's exposed to the weather and constrained site circulation and security concerns on the site. We also have security and organization of city yard concerns as well, which is serving some portion of our operation, as well as the Goose Pond property that's on Pacific Avenue. That's actually a property that's owned by the Water Department and is the current home to our facilities division. So as you're saying, we're actually starting to move some of our operations away from our College Street facility to more farther a field to serve some of our growth in the city yard and the Goose Pond property. So the recommendations to address this is to, number one, acquire adjacent property when feasible to meet these needs. That's those areas that are shown in that map in the kind of tan with the red outline. Efficiently redevelop the site to support future operations. So the major thing here would be to create a multi-story crew building shop essentially east of our current shop facility, move everybody from the shop into that multi-story building and then use where the existing shop is as employee parking. And then in the long term, relocate Parks Maintenance to Kuyo Park if we're not able to obtain additional property in this area. Moving on to Animal Services. Animal Services is in essentially dire need of repair and/or replacement. It's an aging facility that was not purpose-built. It was built as an office building and warehouse back in the day and was converted back in the late 90s to the current Animal Services Building. Operations have also outgrown the facility and have started migrating to the back parking lot area now with some additional modular structures in that area. The activity adjacent to the property presents a safety concern for staff with some of the homeless and transient issues in the area. And the utilities are homeless and transient issues in the area, and the utilities are failing and require significant investment to maintain, specifically the sewer line that was recently replaced in the building. So the recommendation on Animal Services is to coordinate with our regional partners to address critical maintenance, acquire property, and construct a modern-day Animal Services center. If we're unable to acquire an appropriate site soon, the plan is to develop and maintain operations at the current site with a new building. Next is the Administration and Public Safety portion. So this is related to City Hall and the Police Department. So the key findings here is that the City Hall facility was built in phases and is aging. The central and east wings require significant investment. We have awkward space needs. We have a very large front counter, which creates some inefficiencies in our layouts. And then along the lines of public safety is the new police headquarters and training center, which is, as I mentioned at the onset, covered under a separate planning effort. So there's two recommendations for City Hall, an interim and a long-term. Interim recommendation is to renovate the central wing, the area of the building that we're actually in right now, to improve the customer service experience, eliminate the extremely long front counter, add more meeting rooms, and maximize our workstation layout. And what that'll do is that'll gain us the additional space that we need to accommodate new employees over about the next 10-year period. However, that'll only get us about 10 years. The long-term recommendation is to assess our administration needs, as well look at what would happen, or what will happen, when the police station vacates the current station for what might be able to happen with that property. Right now, the recommendation is to mothball it after the police station vacates, but that is very much a short-term recommendation. And then finally, Parks Culture and Recreation, which is, the key findings there is that on two buildings, the Senior Center and the White House, the Senior Center functions well but is undersized, so the recommendation there is to expand it. And the White House is usable but has limited program area. It's also used for storage, so the recommendation is to remodel the White House to create more program and storage space as well. So there's the recommendations on expanding the Senior Center, relocating the White House storage, and renovate the basement for programming. Explore options to add indoor recreation and then build the new Lacey Museum and Cultural Center under a separate effort.
I have a quick question, Ryan.
Yes?
The Senior Center, is there room there to expand? Do we have the space to expand it by 30%?
There's room for one more expansion to the east, so towards the parking lot, towards the, I guess, the log cabin tavern, if you will. So that direction, there's... So that is the area that's in yellow on that plan. So we do have a schematic plan that shows a third phase of addition there.
Okay, great. Thank you.
So those were basically our square footage increases or our modifications to our existing buildings. One thing I did want to make clear is that we have been historically under-investing in the maintenance needs for our facilities. The city spent approximately $600,000 annually on facilities in the last approximately 10 years, which is about 35% below industry standard. So the government facilities plan recommends increasing our maintenance spending in five-year increments to get to those recommended funding levels by the year 2040, and so that is built into our budgeting as well. And then this is how it all kind of lines out in an annual spending plan. You'll notice that quite a bit of it is front-loaded in these early years. Most of that is related to police and animal services, and then from there, the dark blue is the shop, so that's kind of the mid-range project. I did want to point out on this slide, it was an earlier slide that we created, the far end that basically has the training center identified as a future project. The good news is that gets moved now to 24 and 25 associated with the police station. So you'll notice that a lot of the spending for the government facilities master plan is in the next approximately 10 years. So just as a kind of a wrap-up of this section, near-term actions, the recommendations are, first of all, to adopt the plan, then working to acquire property both for Animal Services and Public Works, and then begin design, excuse me, on our critical Phase 1 projects, Animal Services, City Hall Administration, and the Public Works Crew Building. And then as far as budgeting and funding, there's some priorities here as well. Number one is to go through a process to identify the reserves within the city budget to apply to facilities, explore funding options for parks or other functions, pursuing grant funding for the Emergency Operations Center, and then also looking at our utility rate pair studies to include our facilities funding specifically for the shop, for things like stormwater, water, and wastewater, and then incorporate these facility maintenance increases that I mentioned into our annual budgeting. So in doing that, this addresses the decades of under-investment, both in our existing facilities as well as the maintenance. It accommodates for the long-term needs of those buildings that are in the most need of expansion at this point. It expands the, it improves the City Hall customer service experience, expands the Senior Center, and it positions Lacey to serve its community well into the future. It also can be refined and updated as future opportunities arise and can be adjusted along the way, given other priorities. So that brings me to the other part of the approval tonight, or what's in front of you for approval, which is the Capital Facilities Plan. So the Capital Facilities Plan that we've had is in need of significant overhaul. The last update to this template was done in the early 90s, and so, and the last time we adopted a Capital Facilities Plan was back in 2019. So not only did we have a really old template, but we had an outdated version of our Capital Facilities Plan. So this template is now brought up to date, and now we'll have our current Capital Facilities Plan as a part of this. As far as the contents, we have an introduction, we have six chapters by our functional category, and so where all the projects get populated for our Capital Facilities Plan are these various sources, so things like our Government Facilities Master Plan, which I talked about, our Parks Culture and Recreation Comprehensive Plan, our Transportation Plan, and then our Wastewater, Stormwater, and Water System Comprehensive Plans. Each section here includes major goals, review of the key policies and goals, significant issues, which is a summary of concerns to be addressed through these capital investments, and then the priority investments themselves. And then this is eventually what each project looks like. So projects are each described, along with the anticipated annual expenditures, and then how they will be paid for. So this is just an example of a stormwater project, the Clearbrook Drainage System Improvements identifies the department associated with it, a description of the work to be done, a justification why it's needed, and then basically an annual kind of budgeting tool which shows over what years those capital expenditures will be expanded to pay for those capital projects over the next six years. So with that, before I turn it over to questions, I just wanted to mention one thing, or a couple things. First of all, we've updated the police, within the Capital Facilities Plan, we've updated the numbers for police to be very accurate based on the recently approved bids for that project, as well as the Training Center. So those are very much up to date. Those were conceptual numbers you saw originally, and now those have been formalized. And then I also wanted to spend some time thanking our staff team that worked on this. This was a significant effort, probably the biggest project I've ever worked on other than a comprehensive plan update. So we had a great representative from Public Works, Ashley Smith, other staff that worked on this, and as well as the director team. Let's touch the director team several times and thank them all for their work along the way. Before I turn it over to you for questions, I just wanted to mention one more thing, which is the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing back on December 5th. There were no public comments received, and the Planning Commission is recommending approval unanimously. So with that, be happy to take any questions you might have.
I would move to approve ordinance 1655 to adopt 2023/2042 Capital Facilities Plan and the Government Facilities Master Plan.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? So obviously, this was a very important, very first step, right? And what we're doing here is sort of laying the groundwork so we can come up with a financial plan to meet the needs of the City of Lacey going forward. This is something that we can update, you know, monthly if we want to, so this is, give us a good start. Something that I think, you know, we're going to have to add to this at some point is the next phase of the rack. Do you expect that to be part of this Capital Facilities Plan, too, when we're looking at the next phase of the rack?
So all of that would get populated through the Parks and Recreation Comprehensive Plan? I'm not sure if that is already part of the Parks Plan.
Okay. Is there any other questions?
No. Great work.
Nick, I know this is a lot to throw at you.
That's what I was going to address. So, you know, going through this today, one thing that was really clear to me was, although I'm sure this was an extraordinarily complicated and long process, it was even me, you know, a month in, very easy to understand both what we want to do, but the direction of where we want to go. And so I just wanted to say thank you for that effort and that work and making it, you know, even readable for me. Thank you.
Thank you. I know this is really, like I said, besides doing our comprehensive plan update, this is, we haven't had anything close to this in the past to help direct the council and direct the staff to try to figure out how we come up with a funding strategy for all this. So this was a huge undertaking, and I want to thank staff for that. We do have a motion and a second. All in favor of that motion, signified by saying aye.
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 Is there anyone opposed? Then that motion unanimously carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ryan.
If I may, I do also want to recognize Ryan and his management of this project, and it is as significant, as he mentioned, it's the updated template from the early 90s. It is something that we haven't updated since 2019, and it is something that we needed to do to create that roadmap for the future and to help us financially prepare. So I want to thank Ryan and his efforts to manage this project, coordinate with all the various stakeholders to make sure they had input and knowledge of what was going on, and working with our consultants as well, and I'm looking forward to the next step where we start getting into some of the more staff stakeholder process and how these future plans really lay out in the future. So, thank you, Ryan.
So, under the mayor's report, it's, January's can always be really busy. The New Year comes and all of a sudden, bam, you have a lot going on. For me personally, I've had a couple big events that's happened recently. I had the State of the Community address that happened with the chamber. I was, once again, very proud of the work that we're doing here in the City of Lacey and all the planning efforts that we have, and I think I try to highlight that at our State of the Communities of why I'm optimistic about the City of Lacey going forward. Also, yesterday was our Martin Luther King celebration, and I was able to have some remarks at New Life Baptist Church that I think went over very well, and it's great to see all the community come together for that celebration. One other item is the RFQ has gone out for our hearing examiner. I've talked to you a little bit about that, and I'm going to be making a recommendation. As we've talked about this in the past, I'm going to pull together a subcommittee to go over those applications and go through that process, and it'll be my recommendation that we put Councilmember Greenstein and Councilmember Vasquez, along with myself, on that subcommittee. We've worked together very well in the past, doing this exact same thing we did with the city manager. I think I'd like to do that with our hearings examiner that will eventually come to a recommendation to the council, but I'm going to turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor Ryder. The, yes, as the council member recall, with the action that you took in December to update the hearing examiner's ordinance, part of that process was updating our process for securing hearing examiner services. So this is that first step in that new process, which is Grant with Community Economic Development staff issued the RFQ request for qualifications. That request parried closed January 5th, and through that request, we received three submittals of interest. And so the next step is, as the LMC guides us, is that the council would form a committee, make a recommendation to the council, and take final action. So what we're looking for that committee is to be part of that review process and interview process with the three respondents, and then ultimately make a recommendation to the full council.
Normally, I would just go ahead and make that recommendation for Councilmember Vasquez, Councilmember Greenstein, and myself to be on the subcommittee. I was expecting Councilmember Vasquez to be here tonight, and she's obviously not feeling well. I can, I'm not sure what the recommendation is, is to put this off till next meeting? Or?
Or we can even review it, I believe, at the next work session, too.
Okay. So I guess what we'll do is we'll just go over and talk about the next work session. If, you know, council's okay with that plan, then we can move forward at that time. Okay? Then on to the city manager's report.
Yes, I have one item in the city manager's report. It's the Carpenter Road and Britton Parkway Roundabout bid submittal, and I'll turn over to our Public Works Director, Scott Agar, to provide the presentation.
Yeah, good evening, mayor and council. So as the city manager said, I'm here to talk about the Carpenter Road and Britton Parkway Roundabout project. So staff respectfully recommends approval, Project PW 2020-29 to Act of Construction, Inc., in the amount of $2,230,000, $2,230,230 and 0 cents. The engineer's estimate was a little over 2.7 million. There are 15 bidders on this project, which is the most bidders I've seen on a project like this in years, so competition is back, and that's a good thing. And I think that reflects in the difference in price between the engineer's estimate and the actual low bid. So there are 160 working days on this project, and work will begin in March. See here. I'm having problems advancing slides. Yeah, I need better eyes. Yeah, if you could, I'd sure appreciate it. Thank you. So if you could go to the, kind of, the aerial. Looks like this is an older version. Apologize. Anyway, this slide here shows the layout of the project, essentially about 3/4 of a mile long, runs from about 600 feet west of the western leg of Carpenter Road, and runs to the east to Western Parkway, which is just on the far side of the Britton Apartments there. So in terms of roadwork, Thurston County is partnering with us on this. There is about 600 feet of Britton Parkway, or actually Dram Road, west of Carpenter that they asked if we could include in this project and grind inlay. So our contractor will perform the work, and then Thurston County will reimburse us for the cost. Also, in terms of roadwork, the extension to the east of the roundabout, all the way to Western, we're going to grind inlay the westbound lane. That's the lane on the north side of the road, and as you all know, that section, the eastbound/westbound is split by turf, but the westbound section is in really poor shape, so we're going to grind overlay that. That portion will be paid for through, by the Transportation Benefit District, which is the purpose of that. But as you know, the TBD doesn't apply funds towards capital improvement. So the roundabout itself is being paid for out of the arterial street fund. In addition to the roadwork, we also have a little bit of water, but more significantly, we're extending sewer from the current intersection of Carpenter and Britton Parkway where the roundabout will go. That's where sewer ends, and we will run it to the west to that western leg of Carpenter, so that in the future, when we need to extend sewer, say, up Carpenter or even further to the west, we don't have to get under this pavement mat. Water currently runs the entire length of Carpenter into Dram, excuse me, the entire length of Britton Parkway into Dram, and even extends north on that northern leg of Carpenter, a couple hundred feet. So anyway, this project includes the capital improvement of the roundabout. It is a single-lane roundabout, includes that, includes the grind inlay that Carpenter's participating in, it includes the grind inlay that the TBD is... It includes the grind inlay that the TBD is, is paying for, as well as a little bit of water and sewer work. So with that, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them for you.
I'd move to award Lacey contract number 2020-29 to low bidder Active Construction, Inc. of Puyallup, Washington, in the amount of $2,230,230.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Single lane.
Yeah. Was there, was there a reason why we decided to go with a single lane, a double lane there?
Yeah, that's all we need right now. So in the future, there is enough right away to expand to a double lane.
This might have been discussed before, but will Carpenter Road be closed? That section of it during the construction? And then do you know approximately how long the project will take to complete once started?
The project, there is 160 workdays, but we're hoping that the project will be completed, you know, later this fall, before the paving window ends. In terms of closures, there will be intermittent closures of that intersection. The way it's gonna be set up in terms of staging is, they're kinda, we'll build east-west outer legs and then come back and build the inside of the, of the roundabout. So while they are building those kind of outer legs, there'll be a 30-day period where they won't be able to make left-hand turns, say, if you're westbound on Britton Parkway, onto Carpenter or from Carpenter, leftbound to westbound Britton Parkway. So there will be some inconveniences. You know, we ask traveling public to, to be patient with us. We'll do the best we can. But when it comes to building a roundabout, there's really no way to do it without that. But I can tell you, I live south of the, the roundabout at College and 22nd. And I really don't remember the closures that occurred there on my commute to work, so that time passes fast.
I, I'll bring forth a question that, that I was asked about this project. And if you are heading north on Carpenter and you, you stop there, the, the, that big wall, that big mound of dirt that sometimes you see people try to climb with a Jeep or whatever, if, if, if it were to become a two lane, would that be, be scaled back or made into some type of retaining wall or something along those lines? Because it, the visibility because of it is extremely low. And so when people come flying up Britton Parkway and they're headed, they're headed east, you know, if they, if they're moving at a good enough rate of speed, you don't see them until it's too late. So I, I know we haven't had a ton of accidents there and so, you know, a lot of times when things like that are considered, they're more reactive than proactive. But it was just kind of one of those questions that I was, I was having a tough time fielding.
Yeah, that's, that's an excellent question. Site distance is not an issue whatsoever in a roundabout. The whole functionality of a roundabout is it slows traffic down and they have to go around the, around the circle. There, when it, when a two-lane roundabout is constructed, I'm sure we will get into that fill some. And my assumption is that we'll probably end up accommodating that with retaining walls as opposed to sloping it back. But we won't really know until we get into that. But, but again, the difference, you know, between the intersection as it currently exists versus a roundabout is if you're traveling on Britton Parkway right now, you don't need to slow down at all. But when you're traveling on Britton Parkway after the roundabout's constructed, you'll have to slow down to about 10 or 15 miles an hour just to navigate the roundabout. And that, that is the intent of a roundabout, is to slow, slow traffic down.
Do you imagine we're gonna go to a two-lane roundabout when they extend Britton Parkway to two lanes right there? Because right now, it's a weird area where it's not complete two lanes all right.
It's, it's hard to say when, or estimate when it'll get to the point where the traffic volume will warrant that. You know, obviously, a huge influence will be at the time that Nusqali, you know, develops Quimouth. That, that will obviously increase the traffic volume, but it's, outside of that, it's really hard to, to guess or estimate.
Regardless, it's a helpful step for all involved.
Yeah, that's always been a tricky area for as long as I can remember because of the, the blind area and the speed that goes through there. And so, anyway, this is, it's good. This is what very much needed. Okay, any other discussion? Then it's. I, I would just say, we're the lead on this, so I think it's gonna be even better than most projects where we're not.
Thank you.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to point us to, to the low bidder, contract PW 2020-29 to the low bidder. All in favor of that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Mayor?
That motion unanimously carries.
Can I have you repeat your audible vote, please?
So the, oops. The vote was to, let me get back in here.
Just your vote.
Oh. Oh, I, yay. Huh. I just got put, kicked out of the system. Okay, on to our next agenda item, which is boards, commissions, and committee reports. I'm up first. The Transportation Policy Board met on, bright and early on January 10th. We went over our, our meeting schedule for the year. It's that time where we're starting to look at election of officers. I've been the chair of the Transportation Policy Board for over a decade now. And I have already been nominated to be the chair again for this year. We also looked at proposed amendments to our R-TIP, which happens on a regular basis. There are several requested amendments from the City of Olympia for Fones Road and three from the Thurston County. Then we talked about our Unified Work Program, which is something that we're sort of, it's one of the things that we're now required to do as a metropolitan planning organization at our phase of TRPC. And this is something that we haven't had to do in the past, but it's now a requirement. And so we went in depth on what our work program was gonna be. And the one big question that did come up was that we have been talking for a while about looking at our, our trail system and coming up with a strategy to, to maintain our trail system throughout Thurston County. And there's been some conversations at the Transportation Policy Board level to look at maybe a small federal side and a, a, some planning that could go into that so we could maintain our trail system. And that wasn't really included at all in the Unified Work Program. And there was some conversation about that, is when, we've been talking about that for a little while. We would like to see some more movement on that. I know that's gonna require quite a few conversations with the county and all the jurisdictions because this is just something that we haven't done in the past. We have a great trail network. Obviously, we were at a time where some of those trails need updating, but we don't have specific funding to do that. And so to come up with a, a county-wide plan on, on how we maintain that trail network is something very important, something I care about a lot, something I've been talking about for a while and, and think we need. So I think there's gonna be, needs to be some ongoing conversations on, on how that happens. I understand the first sort of result of this is like, we don't want any more work. Staff doesn't want any more work. And we understand that, right? We understand that coming up with a new plan to maintain our, our trails throughout Thurston County is, is gonna be a big deal. And I can understand why the jurisdictions won't want more work to have to do. But it's my feeling if we don't address this and at least start having the conversations of how we maintain the system, then we're just pushing it off and nothing's gonna change. And so I, I really do think this is, can be leadership from the elected side for this to happen. And I don't mind saying that. I don't mind putting myself out there, saying this is something I think we need to do. But I think there's gonna be some, some difficult conversations that we're gonna have to have with, with accounting and all the other jurisdictions on how we're gonna see something like this happen. Then we talked about our, the intercity transit zero emission analysis. Now, the TRPC has been talking about this as well, but this was our, our first look at intercity transit zero admission analysis, and that is my report. I also had the mayor's forum that, and something at the very last second, I came up and I asked the deputy mayor to fill in for me. And so I'm not sure if you just want to talk a little bit about your first experiences at the mayor's forum.
Yeah, the, the mayor's forum is a very open conversation. We, we, we did focus on one main subject that I, that I brought up, which is having a, an executive director for the Regional Housing Council, that they might, you know, be the kind of organization or stand them up in, in a way where, where they can be a little more independent and actually, you know, get a little bit more done. We did talk about the fact that, you know, the RAC is, you know, a group of volunteers doing the best they can, having multiple other committees that they have to be on. We really need an executive director in that body to, to, for it to reach its fullest potential. And I think I brought that, that, that to the table within the first 15 minutes. And we kind of spent the, the rest of our time talking about that one issue. So we did get some support from, at the county level and, and some of the other cities were really starting to get lined up with the vision that, that we really do need to have an RAC that has an executive director, maybe 1.5 FTEs or maybe even two, to exact the kind of work and, and get the things done that we, that we really have agreed need to be done as, as, you know, these jurisdictions have come together and said, you know, we're gonna, we're gonna deal with this as a, as a, you know, as a group, as opposed to everybody just being a solo artist in this arena. So I, I feel like that was a kind of a positive outcome.
Good. Thank you. And with that, I'm, that's ended my report. Out to you, Deputy Mayor.
Okay. Well, I did want to say about your, your, the trail system. Once that comes together, I think that would be a benefit for our DCIP ask that we, we went out to DC for.
I think there's several funding strategies that we can come up with. And there's a lot of federal funding out there as well. We just need to have a, a focus on that. And I know it's more work. I know I get that. But I'm committed to at least having a subcommittee and, and starting to go down that road to figuring out what a plan is that's really important to me. And I will keep trying to say how important that is and, and get. The Transportation Policy Board, for the most part, is on board. We just need to, it always comes down to how do you pay for, how do you come up with a plan? How, how do you do with the pavement index like we have? How do we know what needs help first? You know, there's, so there, there's a huge plan that needs to happen. And I, I know it's gonna be a lot of work, which I, I think it should be a focus.
So I, I actually haven't had any committee meetings this year, but I did want to follow up on my UGA subcommittee. The, the, the last meeting, I, I told you that I was going to be bringing some information to, to this body about land swap and, and tribal inclusion for, for that committee. We did bring that into our workshop and that will go back. I think we kind of agreed unanimously on what we saw. And that will go back to the UGA subcommittee for, for the county policy to be amended for, for those two items. That is my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Greenstein.
Just one short report tonight. TCOM 911 met on January 3rd. Couple of, just a couple of items that I'll touch on real quick. Budget through November, because of course, sales tax collection is always a couple of months behind. But through November, we are actually ahead of budget on revenue and below budget on expenses, so doing really well there. The radio project, which I've been talking about now for quite some time, is actually making some pretty good progress right now and should be completed and active and alive by our first quarter of '25. So it's on track right now. Phone system upgrade, should have some final recommendations on that next week for, for us to look at. And staffing is actually about the best it's been in the last several years. We're down to only eight openings. We started last year with 15 openings. So we've filled over half, about half of the positions. And we're running eight people short of full capacity right now, which, like I said, is in the best position we've been in in years. So that is my report.
Thank you, Councilmember Stedman.
I don't have a report. Law and Justice meets on Thursday in Orca in February.
Councilmember Cox.
Okay. The Thurston Climate Mitigation Collaborative met on January the 8th. We had a guest speaker from an organization called Washington Conservation Action. This was formerly called Conservation Northwest. And they did a presentation on state forest lands management in Thurston County. The Department of Natural Resources manages 2.1 million acres in trust lands throughout the state. And they historically manage these for maximum benefit, which they determined to be timber harvesting. The state 23, 2025 budget has $83 million to promote carbon storage and sequestration in mature harvest. So you've got this dichotomy going on between DNR's steady move to cut these forests, to sell timber to support schools and, and the climate needs. So the collaborative agreed to send a letter to the Department of Natural Resources requesting that they pause sales on the trust lands with mature forests in Thurston County. There are, there are only 2,000 acres of mature forests within the trust and all are scheduled to be put up for harvesting in the next three years. The objective is that Thurston County is trying to identify land that they could swap that has, has trees, but they're not these very mature trees that are more efficient at carbon storage. And so they're hoping to work something out on that. We also went over the work plan for the next two years, actually. And this is the Residential Energy Efficiency and Electrification Campaign. It involves education, resources, rebates, which Lacey's taking part in. And thank you, I got approved for my rebate for a, a new heat pump. And it's a two-year plan that involves considerable community outreach, trying to help educate the public about how important it is to have more efficient use of energy and, you know, tighter homes. And we also had a brief legislative update. It was more of a forecast than a, than a report. And I can, I can give a very brief Regional Planning Council report for Robin, if you want. Try not to duplicate what Andy said. We, we approved a $5.5 million for the Thurston Regional Planning Council, which is the biggest, I think, we've ever had. It's largely because of some new grants that have come forward. For example, one of these enabled expansion of rural transit service for the next two years. They've added Saturday service and more hours, which is a big deal if you're trying to commute from South County up to North County. We heard a zero emissions presentation from InterCity Transit. They're still studying how they're gonna get there, but the current direction seems to be hydrogen fuel cell because they provide longer range on the fuel cell charges, shorter fueling time, and there are other efficiencies. InterCity Transit right now is, I think since summer, using a renewable diesel called R99 that's made up of 99% renewable, renewable materials that don't release new carbon into the atmosphere. And by new carbon, I mean, you know, yes, there's some involved in producing this fuel, but it doesn't, it doesn't have problems after that. And they're using propane on the smaller dialo lift buses. So for now, the authority is going to hold off on investing either way on electric or hydrogen fuel cell technology until the choices become clearer and the technology becomes more reliable. They did receive a $13 million state grant for zero emission hydrogen, hydrogen cell demo project. This is gonna pay for five buses and the infrastructure needed to support them. So pretty soon, we're gonna get to see about that. And then we reviewed amendments to the 2024 Unified Planning Program, which Andy already talked about. And that begins on July 1st. And that's my report.
Thank you. And I know we just, today, under our consent agenda, made our committee assignments official, but Councilmember Dunning, do you have any reports?
Yes, although I wasn't officially a voting member, I did attend the, the Visitor Convention Bureau meeting earlier today. And there were some interesting things talked about there. One, they held a workshop last week with about 70 stakeholders in the community. And one of the big things they really identified was trying to figure out who and by who. I mean more Thurston County, really is as a community, you know, four residents and four visitors. And not only that, but then how we get the the leaders to be able to put that out to the public, be able to put that to policymakers to really just promote what what they have going on. So that's a lot of what their focus is. And they've started collecting data on competitive and comparative markets in order to really identify what the opportunities are in the direction that they want to go in and promote to policymakers and stakeholders. So that's something they're going to be working a lot on this year. Two, two things that really are going on or happened to our neighbor to the south that will inherently affect us in some manner. The Olympia Hotel closed down December 15th rather suddenly. And it was purchased by a group out of Pierce County who develops these type of properties into housing. So there is some good that comes out of that, but there definitely is some kind of community and employee, you know, frustrations on how it how it was handled. So that's going to be moving forward. And then the the Squaxon Island Tribe went into a purchase agreement, I believe, with with the city to purchase about 10 acres around the old city hall with the intention of developing that for economic purposes. So that's something that they are looking at. It's not finalized yet, so there's always things that can go on there, but that should be coming down. And the the city council has been, is fully supporting them and that project. And then something that's kind of good for for Lacy, the Experience Olympian Beyond has hired officially a public relations coordinator. They've been outsourcing that for a long time. And they come from Experience Scottsdale, which is a really nice economic area. And so they spent seven years Experience Scottsdale, and they're a Timberline graduate. So she starts on Monday. So hopefully that gives us a leg up on some things. So that's my report.
Great, great report. Obviously, the Olympia Hotel and the former Red Lion is, that's a blow for lots of reasons. First of all, a lot of us have many memories there. It was our largest hotel in Thurston County and also had really the largest space, meeting space in Thurston, well, in the major areas of Olympia, Lacy, Tomwater. It was the last, obviously, Great Wolf Lodge has some space. And I just recently heard, actually, they're going to be converting a lot of their space over. And that's going away, too. And they're going to convert some of those, that space to a, I heard it was going to be a miniature golf or something like that. Just goes, yeah. And so we're sort of left with a situation where we don't have the hotel rooms, we don't have the the space to really attract a lot of things. And they're already filling that right now with session going on. Losing the that space has been really hard. And so obviously, this is another, I think, you know, hopefully the Quimouth Resorts and when that gets developed and that hotel comes and that space comes is going to be very, very, very much needed in our community because we're really in trouble right now when it comes to hotel rooms and and meeting space. So. Yep, Worthen Tenders, that's it. That's all we got. So anyway, okay. So now we've reached the end of our agenda. Hope everyone is staying warm and made it through this horrible cold. I mean, it was really freezing out there. So hopefully everyone didn't have the busted pipes and everything else that I think a lot of us unfortunately experienced. But with that, we reached the agenda without objection. I'll call this meeting adjourned. And as always, you keep it classy, Lacy.